Great. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Curriculum and Programs Subcommittee. Today is Wednesday, February 10th, 2021. It's approximately 5:04 PM. Teri, can you please call the role?
Yes, Ms. Hurst.
Present.
Ms. Gresham.
Present.
And Ms. Naylor.
Present.
Fantastic. So before we jump in, could we do a quick round of introductions? And then I can hand it over to Superintendent Warwick and Assistant Superintendent Martinez to sort of tee us up and allow for Laurel and Rhonda to present. So I've had the pleasure of meeting both Laurel and Rhonda through another meeting that the Assistant Superintendent was convened a few weeks back. But just for a reintroduction, my name is Denise Hurst, and I chair this particular Subcommittee Curriculum and Programs. Mrs. Gresham and Mrs. Naylor.
Okay, I'm Barbara Gresham. I'm one of the Subcommittee members, Subcommittee member.
Latonya Monroe-Naylor, another member of this Subcommittee.
So we could, does Laurel and Rhonda want to introduce themselves for the others that are on the call? Like, our superintendent wasn't on that call. Neither were Barbara and/or Latonya. Would Laurel and/or Rhonda like to introduce themselves?
I'd like to see Anupak Sinhag Aalak, Tanuk Sinhag Ronde Anderson, Pamo Pak Anurangah Kaurinami, Shabak Tunga, Western Massachusetts Commissioner on Indian Affairs to me, founder and co-director of Okateo Cultural Center as well. So, Kaurinak.
I'm Laurel Davis Delano. I am a professor of sociology at Springfield College, and I've been studying the mascot issue for about 28 years and recently, and been active on the issue as well. And I organize an email list of scholars who also study this topic. And some of us, myself and others, also study other representations of Native Americans. I'm white.
Thank you. So I, so our agenda item is to review and the analysis of the Commerce High School mascot. I want to turn it over to Superintendent Warwick and then Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Martinez, who could help or at least provide an introduction as to how and why we are hearing from Laurel and Rhonda today.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to turn it over to Lydia because she's been handling this issue and has a better background in it.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lydia Martinez, Assistant Superintendent. And so during a school committee meeting last month, Mrs. Hurst brought up the mascot at the High School of Commerce. And in a conversation with the school committee, we were asked to go and help put together a process of how a mascot could possibly be changed if we needed to at the High School of Commerce. And so Dwayne Early and myself reached out to some of our colleagues across the state who had already embarked in some of these conversations in changing a mascot. And our friends over at Athol actually shared with us the exact process that they used to change a mascot in their district. And through that partnership, we heard about Dr. Laurel Davis Delano and how she helped Athol achieve the goal of changing that mascot. So I reached out to her right away, and she was very receptive. And then we, she brought on Rhonda Anderson, who we all had a nice conversation. That led to just another conversation with all of us on this call. Mine is the superintendent, and mine is Ms. Montemeyer, and mine is Ms. Naylor and Ms. Gresham. But the rest of us had a conversation to just discuss the process and what it means, the mascots that we have across the state and how to change them, and what's the proper way to do that. And so with that informational meeting, Ms. Hurst requested that we have a more broad meeting, which is what we're doing right now. So we're still in the stages of doing research and looking at what a process might look like in our great city of Springfield if we do decide to move forward with changing the mascot at the High School of Commerce. And so that kind of gives us a background as to how we are here. And, you know, the High School of Commerce, Matt Brunel, along with Colleen and the principal, have also been involved in these conversations. And I know that Principal Paul Neal has already spoken that him and his students embarked in just, just thinking about it and what it means to have a mascot such as the Red Raiders and the school and through some of the equity work that they've been doing at their building level. And so, that being said, today's meeting is for more information. And so then, here we are, still gathering information so that we could put together a process.
Thank you for that. So I thought that it would, it would only make sense for Rhonda and Laurel to share with the full Subcommittee the information that they shared with us so that at some point, it can make its way to the, to the full committee. But I think, I know actually, that the information that they shared was really helpful and eye-opening. And so I'll turn the floor over to them. But, and Assistant Superintendent Martinez did allude to this, that while she and Athletic Director Dwayne Early have done their due diligence in doing some research of what other districts have done across the state. And unfortunately, Mr. Neal isn't here. And I don't know, Matt, if you want to chime in. But Principal Neal also spoke to what they've been thinking over at the school, what kind of work they've been doing, and what his experience has been coming from the eastern part of the state into the western part of the state and seeing that this mascot was still in use. So if, Matt, if you want to add something, that's great. And then if not, we can turn it over to Laurel and Rhonda. You're on mute.
I will say, just to start, that I found the prior conversation with Laurel and Rhonda to be pretty illuminating. I think that we are coming in knowing that we need to have a good process here. And I'm eager for others just to hear what we heard the last time that, that we had a chance to just listen and listen well to the history and, and just the, the need.
So we will, we will turn it over to Laurel and Rhonda.
Okay, I'll go first. Rhonda and I are two members of a 12-member steering committee for the Massachusetts Mascot Coalition, which got formed around the Massachusetts Mascot Bill, which is, was recently re-proposed. And so we're just the edge of a committee, of a larger group of people. So I, I'm not going to do exactly the same thing I did at the last meeting. The first thing I would like to do is talk about two reasons, the two main reasons why school systems should eliminate Native mascots, especially in Massachusetts. And then I'll touch on some process issues. And then I'll turn it over to Rhonda, who will cover some other things. So there are two main reasons why schools should rid themselves of Native mascots. The first one is that most schools, and I'm sure you all do this as well, in a lot of the decisions that you make are about educational issues. And so there's usually a lot of respect for research findings. And so when you're selecting a reading curriculum or a math curriculum, you turn to those research findings. And so one of the things that myself and Joseph Gahn from Harvard and Stephanie Freiberg from University of Michigan did was put together, and this was sent to you, a handy summary of not all research on Native mascots, but the research on the consequences of them, which are, you know, more important for decision-makers, educational decision-makers, than, say, the history of them or so forth. And we broke those findings, about 20 studies. We broke them into the effects on Native students, Native youth, and the effects on non-Native people, including non-Native students. So first, I'm just going to kind of summarize them because the article is kind of dense. So basically, to kind of summarize the effect on Native youth, the mascots generate a hostile climate for them. And more specifically, the research shows that when Native youth are exposed to Native mascots, either the language or the pictures, and they use a variety of different terms and different Native mascot names and different imagery, it lowers their self-esteem. And it lowers the self-esteem more of Native youth aren't critical of them. You know, because, as some of you, I'm sure, know, when you're critical of prejudice and discrimination, it's protective. Okay, a little bit more. But anyway, lowered self-esteem is one effect. Another is when Native youth are exposed to Native mascots, it lowers their capacity to imagine future accomplishments for themselves. A third, which is a more unusual finding, is that when Native youth are exposed to Native mascots, it lowers their belief that their Native tribal communities can make a difference. Some other studies show that when you expose Native students to Native mascots, it increases their stress, it increases their distress, it increases depression, it increases dysphoria, and it increases hostility or anger. And one study even found that some Native youth, Native students avoid athletic events sometimes because of Native mascots. So, so overall, you know, there's a low percentage of Native youth in the city of Springfield. I'm sure there are some. But it's not, it's harmful to them and, in general, is not a good climate for Native youth. The other set of findings is a larger number of studies. And that's the effects of Native mascots on non-Native. Sometimes it's adults, sometimes they use youth in these studies. And of course, it matters how non-Native people are affected because that can indirectly affect Native people. So the findings for this are that when you expose non-Native people to Native mascots, they, the non-Native people in implicit bias tests associate the Native mascots with negative thoughts and with stereotypes of Native Americans. More importantly, when you expose non-Native people to Native mascots, it increases their negative stereotyping of Native Americans. Further, when you compare non-Native people who support Native mascots to non-Native people who oppose them, non-Native people who support them have higher levels of prejudice and stereotypes against Native Americans. There's one study that is unusual. I don't have this in my notes, that when, when they expose people to Native mascots, it increased stereotyping of Asian Americans. So there is some, you know, some transfer happening here. And two studies show that exposing people to Native mascots increases discrimination towards Native Americans. So, so these, so what these second set of findings show, of course, you don't want, as educators, people to learn stereotypes, prejudice, increase their discrimination. The goal is to reduce that, right? And to, you know, expose people to accurate information rather than stereotypes. And so the mascots for non-Native people are just not educationally sound. And so, so that's really important. And if a school system, or school systems plural, are, you know, increasing prejudice and stereotypes and discrimination against Native people, then that affects Native people when people leave the school and have contact consciously or unconsciously with Native people. So those are the effects. And these effects do not surprise the scholars who study Native mascots or other representations of Native Americans because the mascots are stereotypes, okay? And I'll just kind of explain a little bit about how they are stereotypical. First of all, they, they usually present Native Americans as all the same, like culturally all the same and visually all the same. And, you know, there's over 570 federally recognized tribal nations in the US, and they all have different cultures. And that's not even to mention the state-acknowledged tribal nations. So, you know, that's the definition of a stereotype, taking people who are really diverse, right? And, and meshing them into kind of a Hollywood version of their category. The second is related to why Native mascots were selected to begin with. Native mascots were selected to begin with in the late 1800s and early 1900s. This is right after white colonists, you know, the, the violence ended. The war-type actions against Native people ended at this time. At this time, people did not have positive views of Native Americans. And that is exactly when they started developing Native mascots. And this particular stereotype that Native mascots were selected for is what's called the bloodthirsty warrior stereotype. And this stereotype emerged almost immediately after colonization, kind of as a justification for killing Native people and shoving them into different areas that we now call reservations, right? And if you can portray a people as warlike, bloodthirsty, aggressive fighters, okay, then that, that can serve as a justification for killing them and, and moving them away because it, it sounds like they're going to attack, right? And, you know, the reverse was actually happening, right? You know, it was white people who were taking Native land. So the mascots are, are, the vast majority of them are warriors or raiders or braves. They're men with weapons and sometimes chiefs who are leading these supposedly warriors. And, and at the same time, the other mascots that were selected were mostly animals. So you've got like a little smattering of other people, and then this huge number of Native mascots, and then this huge number of animals. And the type of animals that were selected were not deer and bunnies. They were animals that are kind of portrayed as fighters, like lions, okay? And so, so that's kind of another source of the stereotyping with mascots. And the other thing is that one problem that Native people have that other racial and ethnic groups don't have typically is that Native Americans are stereotyped as a people of the past who don't exist today or who hardly exist today. And the mascots are a good example of that because they're perceived as, like when you interview people, they go, they were warriors, like, like they're gone, okay? And, and they're not, obviously. One other issue, and then I'll get to the second reason. One other issue is that Native mascots are a good example of cultural appropriation. In this case, white people took another race and supposed, a Hollywood version of their culture, and they, and they designed the mascots. Most white mascots were selected by white people, okay? And they created the mascots, and they are using them as representations of themselves. And of course, they're not Native. So, and they're taking like somebody else's identity and making a representation of them and portraying a particular version of culture. And it, it's really offensive to a lot of people when somebody else takes on their identity and controls it. Okay, so that's the first reason. The first reason is really that, that Native mascots are harmful. The research findings show. And I just kind of explained a little bit about why. So the second really important point is that these mascots are representations of Native Americans. They're not representations of other groups. And so when thinking about harm or opinion, it's the group that's represented that should have the voice, okay? Because it's not a representation of white people or Asian people or other groups, right? And so, and when you look to the people who it's represented, you should look, we should look to their representative bodies. And the representative bodies for Native Americans are tribal nations, Native nations. And in Massachusetts, there are five tribal nations that support the elimination of Native mascots that have open letters that you were sent a link to. And there are the Chappaquiddick Tribe of the Wampanoag Nation, the Herring Pond Wampanoag Nation, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, the Massachusetts Tribe at Ponkapoog, and the Nitmuck Nation. And so you, those are representative bodies of Native people. And I'll come back to that point. The other thing is, the largest Native American organization that exists is called the National Congress of American Indians. And they have been working to eliminate Native mascots for something like 50 years. And they have specifically, they're sending letters all over the country right now. And they do have a letter in support of eliminating mascots in Massachusetts. So, so the two main points are, the research findings suggest that the mascots are harmful. That's the first point. The second point is, these are representations of Native people, and we need to listen to their, the bodies that represent them, which are the tribal nations and the National Congress of American Indians. So now I'll switch and focus on process a little bit. You know, feel free to ask me questions during or after. So, a lot of times, school systems, they think that they should have their community, like in this case, the city of Springfield, or their school students, student body, they think they should poll them or let them vote on whether to eliminate or retain a Native mascot. But in almost all cases, the percentage of Native people in the community that have Native mascots, they're really common where, they're not a lot of Native people. You know, so it's, it's, that creates a situation where it's, it's non-Native people making decisions about Native representations, which I already talked about. And it's a civil rights issue of a minority, and by minority, I mean small group, okay? And, and generally speaking, it's good practice not to let people vote on civil rights issues for a group that's small, that their voice is this big, right? So, and also, it suggests, when these polls and votes happen, it suggests that non-Native people should be able to control representations of Native people, which is problematic, you know? Control decisions about representations of another group. Also, another problem with letting people vote or polling them is it ties the hands of the school committee. Because in most cases, there'll be a vote for retention. And then the school committee, if they decide to eliminate the mascot, everybody can say, hey, they went against the popular vote. We do think, I'm speaking a little bit for the mascot steering committee, that it would be good to involve the community and/or students in selecting a new mascot, but not the elimination of the old one. And a lot of times, in a lot of communities, there's so much attachment to the Native mascot. And there's a couple of research reasons for that. It had, you know, the self-esteem of other people go up, especially whites, when, when they're exposed to Native mascots. But, so it's really important to have a good set of solid criteria that don't let other Native mascots slip in, in place of your old one. Like, a lot of times, people will try to get things like Tomahawks. It's not an actual person, even though it's associated with Native people. Or the Thunderbirds, which in some Native cultures is a significant part of their culture. So that's just a strategic point about process. I have a few others strategic points. So we know from research that most non-Native people, especially whites, but not only whites, support Native mascots and do believe that they honor Native Americans. And, and because of the lack of accurate information in the education curriculum and the lack of accurate information in the media and stereotypes that are in those spheres, especially the media, people are a long way from being able to understand the problem with Native mascots. They're also always portrayed positively, like, they're so brave, they were good fighters, you know? And people have a hard time getting their heads around things that appear on the surface to be positive, that they might be harmful, right? So, like stereotypes of Asians as smart or blacks as all good athletes or women as all nurturing. Those on the surface, they appear very positive, but the origins of them are rooted in oppression, and they often operate in problematic ways in, in today, in the current period. So, so it's too hard. First of all, school committees and schools, they, they don't have access to educating the community. They could offer a program, but many times, the community wouldn't come. And furthermore, you can't provide education. You can only provide education for your student body, right? But since most people know stereotypes, they're, they're not starting at ground zero. They're usually starting behind the starting line because, you know, you have to remove the stereotypes. Because you, you, you know, you have to remove the stereotypes to get to the starting line and then start to educate. And so, um, that cannot be done quickly. Um, so, um. So, uh, basically, education on native issues. Um, and native people take significant time and it takes significant expertise. Um, and so it would be terrific beyond eliminating native mascots. If schools, school systems and states, um, started to infuse, started to prepare teachers. So this is the colleges, right? Um, to understand and be able to teach about native people and native issues. And not just from the past, not just history, um, but also current native people and issues. Um, and most teachers in most school systems in the United States are not prepared. Um, to teach about these things. Um, so it'd be great if along with, um, eliminating your native mascot. You know, you were able to bring some, um, workshops and, and materials. Um, to your teachers so that, um, all of them are prepared. Or better prepared, get a start at being prepared. Um, so two more little things. One is that usually when there's struggles over native mascots. Um, there's people who pop out of the wood, who claim native heritage, who say, oh, but I love this mascot. This mascot is great, um, you know, and things like that. Um, and so, uh, once again, I would advise you to pay attention to the representative bodies of native people. Because there's no group of people, uh, women don't agree on everything, right? Um, and neither does any other group. Mexican-Americans don't all agree with each other. Um, so, um, and, and the last thing is, as some of you know. Um, we, the mascot steering committee has been running panels of, uh, representatives from. Um, native organizations and native tribal nations. And, you know, we could probably arrange that for your school committee. And that is more moving than having, um, a white scholar talk to people. Um, because, AKA me. Um, because, you know, I don't have those experiences. And it's important to hear the experiences of native people. Although research is important. I'm done. So Rhonda can carry forth.
Oh my goodness, I don't even know where to begin after that Laurel. That's amazing. So, you know, I wasn't quite sure what you were looking for from me. Um, for tonight, and I actually had prepared sort of like, um, a panel presentation. Something that I would normally do, um, you know, for communities and school committee meetings, like full-on meetings. Um, so I can still do that if you, it's being recorded, you might, you could show this. But I think one of the, one of the most important processes going forward. Is making sure that you create lasting and reciprocal relationships with native community. Um, the question of mascots will then become very apparent. Um, you know, would, would you like me to go, go forward with this, this presentation I?
I think that you should Rhonda, because we didn't get the presentation and the conversation that we had. We had you sort of hold that till we got, till we were able to invite the other school committee members and our superintendent and Matt. And, um, they're all here, so I think it would make, I think it makes sense just so that we have an understanding of. Of, of, of all of it, right? And I think that one of the points that Laurel hit on was hearing from somebody from an actual tribal nation.
Right, so Koyanak, um, Koyanak Nalag Nagi, so thank you for listening. Um, so what I'll do is I, I will screen share and, um. Desktop, uh, let's do that. Okay, how is that? So, you know, let me just back up, I'm a new back at the basket. I'm from Alaska, I was born in Fairbanks. Um, my enrollment village is a native village of Cocktoback, um, but I grew up here in Western Massachusetts. Um, I do return home often to Alaska, so I have a connection to both native communities in Massachusetts and in Alaska. Um, I also wanted to make sure that I didn't forget to tell you that I'm speaking to, from Corinne. Which is the traditional homelands of Sakoki Abenaki and the Pecum Tuk. Um, I'm starting with sixteen twenty because I kind of want you to see through the eyes of an indigenous person growing up here in Massachusetts. And see what I see in Massachusetts. So the educational system, let's go right from the beginning. This upholds the myths of Thanksgiving and Plymouth Rock, you know, using this very dominant colonizer lens on history. And using this colonizer lens, it creates a more comfortable account. But it does a really great job of erasing native narratives and our histories of thousands of years. Um, so hopefully, you know, it's been four hundred years since, uh, the Plymouth Rock. Hopefully, we can begin to hear indigenous voices and start some kind of truth and reconciliation process. Um, but I really wanted to start here because what schools teach us at an early age matters. Um, schools teach in a system that controls our identities on multiple fronts. And they're using, by doing that, it's using intentional erasure. And it's essentially the disappearance of our existence. This type of education of disappearance and erasure. Right, it begins in, in, early in schools with what's called institutional racism. I'm sure you all know this. This is my daughter's school, this was third grade, um, twenty twelve, so it's a recent history. Um, these books were taught to her third grade classes, nonfiction. And it's kind of important to understand subjectivity to a third grader. It's really hard for them to suss out what is fiction versus nonfiction. But one of the most important things that they learned from this book, they learned from this book was that Indians eat human meat off the bone. And they would just as soon skin you alive. And this author for the courage of Sarah Noble likened Indians to little brown mice. Not even human beings. Um, the vocabulary words that came home were heathen squaw, which is actually kind of a swear word. Savage, Indian moccasin, and the test, the test came home with the sentence, Indians are savages. Because my daughter asked for a sample sentence for the word savage and her teacher replied, Indians are savages. So this had long-lasting horrible effects. I mean, we had my daughter's best friend sitting at our dinner table saying that my daughter was not native. Because she wasn't a heathen savage that ate human meat off the bone. You know, there are plenty of exceptional Native American authors for every grade level. And yet, these books were unchallenged for over twenty-five years. So elementary schools are participating in institutional racism, education and stereotyping and biases. And this type of education is continued in high schools and colleges. Through the use of mascots and team names. So I am a longtime activist on removing native mascots. Participating from afar in nineteen nineties. Um, through the changing of frontiers mascot and team name of the Arskins to the Redhawks. Um, in September of twenty sixteen, I was pretty active in the Turner's Falls High School Indians name change. Um, seeing that vote to change happen in February of twenty seventeen. After a really long, challenging and divisive battle. Um, in March of twenty nineteen, I began to work on Mohawk Trail Regional High School Warriors team name and mural. Um, and they voted to keep the Warriors' name under duress from pro-mascot individuals. But they removed that problematic mural from the gymnasium wall. So I'm hoping they have recognized, like, like they recognize they have a lot more work to do. Um, I have both of these schools here because both Turner's Falls and Mohawk are high schools that I attended. Um, yeah, I had problems with the mascot going there. And Booster Week was a flat-out disastrous time with the floats, the costumes. Um, they even had knee top day where you went around how everybody in war paint. Um, my daughter does not go to the district high school. Because I don't not, I don't want her to have the same issues with mascots that I did. You know, um, instead, like I proudly cheered her on as aardvarks or otters. Like, we're gonna be proud of our kids no matter what. Um. It, so this is, this is a great image to see, I don't know if you can see the whole thing. But, um, through these stereotypical representations, mascots erase the identity of people. And it generates stereotypes about what a native person looks like and portrays us as people in the past, as Laura has said. So empirical evidence shows that these representations lead to native students struggling with that positive identity. I mean, how can you feel positive with either of these representations here? Um, and through the use of these mascots, non-native students are only left with these stereotypes of who we are. So this makes native students feel unsafe, unwelcome, unseen, unheard, and that's a civil rights violation. The use of these mascots. In educational settings, green lights, more widespread community stereotyping. But this behavior doesn't just stay in the school, it moves into the community. And as most portrayals of native mascots are warlike, aggressive and violent. You can see as evidenced by her local newspaper, the headlines, which read Indians invade and town braces for attack. As well as the outright cultural appropriation by wearing the stereotypical headdresses to the games. So I would say, and I said this in the last meeting, that we are the last accepted vestige of overt racism in this country. And I would go so far as to even say celebrated racism and celebrated cultural appropriation. So mainstream society, with these mascots and images, they view native people as ignorant drunks, savage warriors. The sexualized Pocahonties. And this kind of representation leads to what most people think versus the truth. So people have these thoughts of a romanticized princess versus the reality of our struggles. And the violence that we face as indigenous people today, upholding our tribal sovereignty and indigenous rights. So this is a really important, crucial point to understand. Because our women and girls have the highest rates of being murdered or missing. Our women have the highest rate of sexual assault. Our teenagers have the highest rates of suicide. And our men have the highest rates of incarceration and death from police brutality from any race on this continent. I'm not playing oppression Olympics, but that's the truth. Yet we make up less than two percent of the population in the United States. So what a school system teaches us and what we see those myths and those stereotypes create biases. They dramatically affect our outcomes. So it can be really hard to visualize a future with yourself in it when you're facing this kind of erasure and violence. So as Laura was saying, there needs to be an understanding of how the rise of mascots began. When our native children were removed from their homes and placed in boarding schools. In a policy of intentional cultural genocide. Non-natives at that time struggled to find this common identity, right, in this melting pot country. And they chose native images to honor the warrior and the fallen savage. And that is only giving nod to manifest destiny. And it also thereby successfully controls our identity and representation. So we're the only race used for mascots, right? As Laura was saying, we're alongside animals and those chosen professions like cowboys and patriots. And races that are not oppressed minorities like Vikings and imaginary beings like leprechauns. But we need to understand that in this day of like racial justice. Everyone needs to understand that the oppressions and marginalizations of any racial group is never acceptable. And we should not overlook this racism in our educational system via mascot. And we cannot overlook indigenous voices when we say this is not acceptable, not honoring, and indeed harmful. As Laura was saying, the National Congress of American Indians, right? Hiding that mascot since nineteen sixty-eight. Um, you know, they, they did give a bill, um, supporting the Massachusetts bill to remove mascots from high. Uh, they gave the letter of support for the Massachusetts bill. Um, removing mascots from high schools. And over a hundred and forty-five tribal government, education, professional, civil rights and religious organizations in the United States. Also have recognized the negative health impacts of Native American mascots and called for the elimination or restriction on Native American mascots. Um, you know, thankfully, we, we've seen a lot of schools step away from their mascots. And, you know, your fellow, oh, my dog is squeaking, my fellow, uh. Uh, panelists have really, really done a fabulous job through Zoom. And. We have actually seen Barnstable and Athol recently stepped away from using their Red Raiders mascot. For these reasons that we have set out. Um, we have seen changes in, as I said, Athol, Barnstable, Grafton, Hanover, Medfield, North Brookfield, Penticat, Pittsfield and Winchester. And we saw partial changes in Braintree and Mohawk Trail. Um, oh, and Mr. Early, I wanted to remind you that your alma mater recognized the harm of native mascots. And changed their mascot from the UMass Redman to the Minutemen in nineteen seventy-two. Um, so I've been really honored. Um, to have been a part in educating communities, uh, to this issue. So let's see, here's your mascot on a football helmet. It's portraying this aggressive, warlike, even violent native man, you know, stereotipified with war paint and a feather headdress. You know, feather headdresses are considered sacred and a cultural, significant, significant cultural item in Western Plains tribes. Not Eastern tribes, and they're not worn casually as each feather is earned. And certainly not honoring when used as a caricature or adorning the side of a helmet. Also, you know, I've been taking a hard look at your own school. And, you know, how does using a mascot violate your own mission statements? So from your website under cultural pillars and restorative community. You know, there's, you're building strong foundation from which positive relationships are built. Pillars that will guide how we all live with support and respect one another at pathways. So native mascots are not respectful, they're not honoring, and they're going against the very wishes of native tribal nations in Massachusetts. Um, by living by these pillars every day. Um, da-da-da-da-da, we gain opportunities for you to gain knowledge, to explore your interests, blah, blah, blah. Native mascots, as I showed before, they do not stay in the high schools. They will leave for the wider community, as demonstrated, like I said, by newspaper headlines. And they do not prepare the students for a larger world, which there is. which there is a higher population of Indigenous people. Everyone is welcome here. We are a school of students, educators, parents, and visitors, and are noticed, welcomed, and valued. Well, schools with Native mascots, you know, as Laura was saying, decades of empirical evidence that shows Native students and community members do not feel noticed, welcomed, or valued. And mascots participate in rendering, like invisible, our 570 Native communities that are thriving today. Being mindful in thought and actions. Gosh, participation in a racist mascot, one that refers to the color of skin in particular, goes against morality and ethical citizenry. Speaking with care and power. So is Red Raiders the story you really want to tell students? Native students in schools with mascots do not see themselves being portrayed in a positive manner, and Red Raiders is not a positive manner. And to fail to realize the best possible future selves in seeing something like that, that definitely is, it's limiting the potential of Native students and creating stereotypes and biases that will follow the student throughout their lives or until they take courses in college to learn the truth. And then, let's see, I think under Restorative Community, so your core values of agency and relationships, restorative justice is an approach to addressing disruptive behavior that centers on building relationships and righting wrongs. So I know that this is more of an interpersonal piece between students, but there is one huge movement, and it's called Truth and Reconciliation. And these studies have been done by at least Maine in this country and Canada and other countries. Because there have been centuries of intentional genocide, intentional cultural genocide, and stolen generations of children via the foster care system. So it's kind of hypocritical to be considering mentoring students in a restorative community when ignoring the wrongs of a Native mascot, especially one called the Red Raider. And believing relationships are foundational to the process of building and maintaining community will begin long-lasting and reciprocal relationships with neighboring tribal nations. As I had said before, the answers to the question of mascots will become apparent. Creating safe spaces. Well, schools with mascots do not create a safe space. I definitely, in school communities that have mascots, it is not a safe space. I have had fingers in my face. I've been called all kinds of names, death threats, rape threats, you name it. I've been harassed online. It is not a safe place. And I cannot, I do not feel safe to speak my truth at most schools with mascots. I don't feel respected. I don't feel valued. And that mascot creates this atmosphere of entitlement over a misguided use of our representation. Let's see, we focus on repairing harm by taking responsibility and seeking to understand each other. Well, this is the first step in understanding each other, this moment right now that we're having. And taking the responsibility is to read the empirical evidence, the research, make educationally sound decisions, and make the obvious and necessary change away from a racist mascot. You'll be mentoring the students and how to be lifelong learners and take responsibility for their actions in a positive and beneficial way. Let's see, habits of mind and relationships. Skill of human diversity, citizenship, and sense of community. Well, this statement is a reminder that the school is not demonstrating an understanding of the prejudice and biases created by harmful, race-based mascotry. And agency. Let's see. You know, I like that the one way down at the other, not only the interacting respectfully with others and, you know, and understanding their differences, but analyze their roles and responsibilities in their family, their school, and their community. Well, everything here, everything in that sentence, everything here supports the move away from a racist mascot to support Indigenous community and being aware and mindful of personal and collective actions and how their impact on individuals and communities, no matter how well-intentioned, mascots create harm. Ooh, do I have more? Yes, there is a skill of self-worth. Well, you know, as Laurel and I both said, please understand that empirical evidence and decades of research shows that self-worth and value in a community with a mascot is decreased for Native youth population. So I humbly ask that you live by your own ethics. Be the lifelong learners that you aspire your students to be. And vote to replace this Red Raider mascot. You know, you're gonna be on the right side of history. You can be the pillars of community and the mentors that you want to be for your students by living up to your own mission statements and make the change before you're mandated to do so. So you're not gonna be losing an identity, you will not be losing memories, but you will gain a community spirit and community cooperation coming together to create a mascot and a name for everyone, that everyone can truly be proud of. But first and foremost, remember, we're always gonna be proud of our children, even if they are aardvarks or otters. Thank you, Tabra. That's it. So I guess if you had any questions, I'm gonna try to get out of here. There we go.
Sure. So thank you both, Rhonda and Laurel. Greatly appreciated. I will open it up to questions if there are any or comments.
I do have a, oh, Ms. Gresham, I see you talking. You can unmute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can't hear you still, Ms. Gresham.
You can't hear me?
Yes, now you can.
Yes? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, I think we've frozen. Yeah? Okay, thank you. So my question is for Laurel. I know she said the largest tribal nation. Can she tell me that again?
I said the largest Native organization.
Okay, Native.
It represents, I think, like about at least 200 tribal nations, over 250 tribal nations. And it is like the, it's known as the body that represents the tribes and Native individuals on US national issues.
All right.
Or it most represents.
All right. So there was, you talked about five tribal nations?
Yeah.
And within that five, there's one largest, the largest one, correct?
No, not, I mean, Rhonda can answer this better than I can, but I can just say that in Massachusetts, Native people were decimated. So all of the Native nations in Massachusetts are relatively small. I mean, large Native nations are like the Navajo, the Cherokee, who are not in New England. Rhonda, do you want to say something about that? You're muted.
Yes, I just unmuted myself. Right, so in Massachusetts, that's the Chappaquiddick tribe of Wampanoag Nation, the Herring Pond Wampanoag Tribe, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. So those are three different subgroups of Wampanoag. The Massachusetts tribe at Ponca Pog and Nittmuck Nation, which has two different, shouldn't say, but tribal bodies. So the, I was gonna send you a link in the chat to the NCAI, so you can look at it.
So I did send, I did send a link to the letters from the five tribes prior, you know, in material that Teresa sent to you.
Okay. All right, all right, thank you.
I just have a, I don't know if this is one or two, but I did want to first say that thank you both for your in-depth presentation. I was just thinking about how enlightened I am, as much research as I try to do and learning about things, how there's still so many things that we all do not know. And I remember sitting in a game last year, locally, at a basketball game, when they had a bunch of people coming from all sides, all kinds of places. And we were in this basketball game, and there was a guy sitting in front of me. And he was yelling at the players. And they were all black players, and he was yelling at them, "Come on now, do something, do something." And he was basically expecting him to make him laugh and entertain him. And the way he said it was so derogatory, and I remember feeling, I remember thinking to myself, wow, I never have felt this kind of pit in my stomach before, the way that I'm feeling right now, with this man expecting these black boys to act like monkeys. That's basically, he was making all these movements and gestures and just, it was very disgusting. And I said that to say, as you are, we're talking, I was just envisioning, what if one of our mascots was like, you know, a Sambo or some other derogatory, you know, mascot that would be offensive to me as a black person? And if I had to see that every day, all day, how that would make my skin crawl and the trauma that it would cause me? And feeling like I would, I don't, I'm not valuable because everybody else seems to be right, because they don't have a problem with it, but I do. And so that's the sentiment that I experienced as I was listening to you, Rhonda, share your stories. And thinking about that moment when I was sitting there, how disgusted I felt listening to this guy talk about these black boys that were just enjoying their basketball game and having fun. And I never really thought about it this way. And you know, so I really appreciate this information. I appreciate your bravery and your courage for sharing your story. And I appreciate Laurel for this, all the data and all the information that you've been able to provide, because you're so right. Like, if we sit back and we think about, there's not enough folks that come from Native American backgrounds that are represented in our communities. So we don't get to hear their stories. We get to hear stories about the Puerto Ricans or the Dominicans or the Africans or the Vietnamese people. But what about the smaller population that nobody ever gets to hear their story? And one last thing I want to say is, my grandfather, I forget, we've been doing research, and I forget the name of the tribe that he's connected to, but I remember the lady who was helping me is from Penn State. And she does all this research, and you might know her well, because she works at the college a lot. And she, we found all the information, and I said that to say, when they classified my grandfather, they did not classify him properly. So that's how he didn't know who he was or where he was until he started doing all these digging. And so I would imagine there's a lot more people that aren't accounted for that don't even know who they are, where they come from. Just because, again, the way that the system was set up back then, and people just looked at you and made an assumption of what you are and named you accordingly in the census, and you might never know, might not ever know who you are. So I think there's just so much value to not just this process, but the educational piece of why it's necessary so that folks can understand why this is really necessary. And your closing words about this being such a racist outward show that most people don't understand is racist and offensive. Like, I don't know, I'm just over here feeling like overwhelmed. So I just had to share that I'm feeling right now at this moment because I sometimes feel like if people don't have that sentiment of having felt that way at some point in their life, it's hard to understand and relate. But because I could easily relate to what you were saying, it made me feel like, whoa, if I'm feeling this all the time, what would that feel like for me? And what would my kids feel like if they had experienced this all day? So thank you. I'm gonna be quiet.
I just wanted to clarify one of, well, two points. One, I misspoke, colleges don't use racist mascots anymore. Like, that's been done for decades now, most colleges. Okay, well, NCAI said no, right? So, and two, the Native tribes in Massachusetts were not entirely decimated. There's still a large population of Indigenous people to Massachusetts that are still here. There's over 30,000 Native people in Massachusetts right now. And there's tens of thousands of Indigenous people from Massachusetts. I happen to be one of the transplants. That's counted in that 30,000 number. But we're still 0.6% of the population. So we are a minority among minorities. We are really the smallest, we're the fastest-growing population in the United States, but we're still only one, less than, less than 2% of the population across the country. So.
I was just gonna mention a couple things, unless you're, are you still talking?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the closest, I think, Rhonda can correct me if I'm wrong, the closest tribal nation to you is the Nittmuck in central Massachusetts. I was also gonna say, kind of related to Latoya's point, as I'm sure you all know, the way that the US government dealt with race and African Americans was the one-drop rule, right? Because they were economically interested in having more free labor from enslaved people. But they used the opposite racial policy with Native people because there was a desire to eliminate Native people, not to gain more slaves, right? And so so that resulted in different types of policies because whites wanted Native land, and so they, getting rid of Native people enabled that. I mean, not literally getting rid of all, getting rid of them, some of them, literally, but also making up, like Rhonda was talking about, culturally assimilating and things like that.
Oh, another, another point is Nittmuck Nation is a state-recognized, the state-recognized tribe that's closest to you. But as well, the Moxican Nation has, their traditional homelands is Stockbridge area. And they have a tribal office in Williamstown. And their tribe is now located in Menominee Territory in Wisconsin. So, but they do maintain tribal connections to Massachusetts. And they do have a tribal office in Williamstown right now. Bonnie Hartley is the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer. And you're also intersecting with the Abenaki. And the Abenaki is out of Vermont. And they are also state-recognized bands of Abenaki. So there's plenty, plenty of folks that are local that you can, you know, talk with and start building relationships with.
So I'll jump in, because I do have a couple of comments. And I assume, first and foremost, thank you Laurel and Rhonda for sharing. I really appreciate it. I loved the word that Matt used, which was illuminating because like Latonia said, there's so much that I didn't know. And I'm sure there's tons that I still don't know. This conversation is really eye-opening because although we don't have a huge Native American population here, we still have populations of people who are oppressed. And when we're talking about striving for equity, we can't do that for just one group and turn a blind eye to another. And so when this was brought to my attention, probably, it was before the pandemic, I knew, because I had I, I knew because I had, I had heard about what was happening in the other parts of the state. I also had seen what was happening on the national stage. And, and then the pandemic hit and life happened. And I had a conversation with the superintendent in the midst of the pandemic and during the racial outcry after the, the murder of George Floyd. And it was because somebody, it, it was because I think I was watching something on the news and I thought, oh my God, I remember when that person said something to me. And I was guilty of it not rising to the same level of concern, had it been that somebody came to me and wanted to talk about something that was oppressive to our Latino or our black population. And so I, I really felt compelled to make sure that I mentioned it to, to the superintendent. Um, and I am thankful, uh, superintendent, that you have provided Dwayne and Lydia to go out and do this level of research. I know that this is not going to be an easy decision and that folks might, although I feel like it should be, that's my own personal view. I know that, you know, it could very well stir, stir controversy. I know that folks feel like it could be a distraction, but it is really about, um, equity. And not only equity for us as adults, but I think someone mentioned it earlier, that we're preparing our students to go out into the world, whether that's the college, the career, the military, and to send them out there and not prepare them and make sure that they have eyes wide open and understand how to treat people and what things might be offensive. I think we're doing a huge disservice. And I'll just close in saying that, you know, I think it's important for us to be proactive. And like Rhonda said, why would we consider waiting until it's an actual mandate? And so I'll, I'll stop there in case other folks want to open up. But I do think that next steps have to, um, be discussed. And I'm mindful of Laurel and Rhonda's time. So I don't know if there's an appetite to share this recording so that the other school committee members can view it, um, in advance. I also don't know if that's, you know, any sort of a violation. I don't think it should be, um, because it'll be, it'll air at some point, right, Terry, on Focus Springfield? So that they can, can at least get the same information that we've all gotten? Um, or if there's a feeling that, you know, it might be more powerful to, to make sure that other school committee members have the opportunity to hear from Laurel and Rhonda directly and be able to ask, um, follow-up questions.
Well, uh, um, I think that it, it's important to center Native voices and in particular tribal nation Native voices especially. And so I, I think it's great if you share this with them. But if you have a program for the school committee, I think it should be a panel of Native people. And I can be online in case anybody has any questions about the research, but I, I don't think I should be part of that panel.
I disagree. I think you have great, important information to share.
Well, I know that, but they could listen to this recording and hear me.
So, um, thoughts from anyone else? And in particular, from the actual members of the, the subcommittee about how to potentially move forward? You're muted.
Thank you. I think maybe, I, I, I would love the panel. That sounds good to me because you get questions. And, you know, Laura did such a great presentation as well as Rhonda. I think having them on the panel. I don't know. I don't know what, how Latonia feels about that.
I agree because I'll be honest, Ms. Hurst. I don't, I strongly doubt, and I'm, I'm, I don't want to sound like the bad person here, but with the schedule that folks have, I strongly doubt that they're going to be able to carve out 90 minutes to intentionally watch the recording along with a lot of other things that they have to do. I think unless you have experience, that you don't really understand the value of it. And people make assumptions. And I, so I would hate for folks to make assumptions coming to the meeting thinking they already know what the topic is going to be and what the conversation is and not having watched the recording. And we can't mandate them to watch the recording. So having the presentation or a panel where folks can get some of this information, and maybe we don't have it as in, in depth, um, for sake of time, but at least we're able to give folks an opportunity to hear the authenticity of their voices and really receive what they have to say. It's a lot easier to look at data and turn it off and say, oh, it's not that serious. It's a lot harder to listen to Rhonda and hear her story and say, oh, that's not important.
It's, it's important that the panelists, Native panelists coming into communities are protected, um, from, like, it's great that this is all happening on Zoom so I don't have to see somebody with their face this close to Rhonda's face screaming. And, but it, um, you know, it, it, it wouldn't, if there was quite, uh, after the panel, so if you started the meeting with the panel, you know, after your beginning part of meeting stuff. I think the que, if there's any Q and A after it, it should be screened. The questions should be screened. So it's not hostile for the panelists. This is based on experience of significant hostility.
That's a really good suggestion. And superintendent does a really good job. We've had a couple town hall meetings with thousands of people. And they've done, their team have done a fabulous job with screening calls and, and having a setup to make it safe for folks to be able to share their opinion, but not be disrespectful to the staff or anybody else. So I, I, I appreciate you mentioning that. And I'm sure that the superintendent will be mindful of that when, at, at whatever time that would happen.
Yeah, we, we could definitely do that. We have some experience with that. So we'd make sure that it's a safe environment for everyone. We did a lot of screening with town hall that, that Latonia helped us set, helped us set up and it worked out really well. So we can control that.
And I would also add that it would depend, right? So if we decided to do something like a town hall, then, um, like the superintendent and Latonia just said, we, we could absolutely screen for that. And if it happened during an actual school committee meeting, which I, I feel like I, I, I don't, I, I would definitely have to have a conversation with, um, the superintendent and the vice chair. You, there would definitely be, um, measures in place for that to not occur because although it's public, um, there's no interaction with the public. So they wouldn't be able to, to sort of, you know, type anything in the chat. I mean, if it's being streamed on, on YouTube, they, there, you might get folks that might have something to say, you know, on, on that particular, um, platform. But at an actual school committee, there would be no interaction, um, outside of the superintendent and the school committee members. So, you know, a, at, at this point, I do think that, um, we have to, we have to discuss how to, to move forward. I think that the first step, it sounds like we need to have the full panel and we need to have the full committee present. I would like to be able to, um, have a conversation with the vice chair about how that might be able to occur unless, um, superintendent and Matt, you guys have thoughts about, um, you know, do we open it up and do it a town hall? Matthew, I know that Paul Neil wanted to be here and so, um, he does sense his regrets. He was unable to make it. You know, do we do, do we do a town hall style?
Yeah, um, you know, Ms. Hurst, we're, we're going to be differential to the school committee. This is, we, we have no best practices or knowledge of best practices with, with how to bring this about. So, um, so we will, we'll follow your lead. I don't want to sound like a, a coward in saying that, but we, we, we have no, no concept as to, as to what the right way is forward. And just know that this is within the jurisdiction of the school committee. So we'll do, we'll do what, whatever you, whatever you really want to.
Thank you. Um, superintendent, did you have any thoughts? If not, then I would err on having a conversation with, um, Chris around having either a, a potential special committee. I know that, I don't know what's on deck for, um, for the, for the working session. I saw that we do, we had one just put on. But I am trying to figure out what would be the best way to go about moving forward to at least allowing for this other school committee members to hear a panel.
You know, I, I, I think we should work with Chris on that and figure out what you folks, again, like Matt, we want to provide support. We understand this is a school committee decision. So our role would be to provide support, um, in setting up a, a proper forum that everyone agrees on and, and, you know, a good process. So we're, we're here to do that for you. I think the next, next discussion would be with the vice chair. As to a meeting, we'll certainly accommodate anything you want. The working session we were going to do was on school reopening.
Okay.
Because we have that March 15th date looming and a lot of, of irons in the fire, so to speak, and things to work out. You know, so, um, I think we kind of need that for that, that topic, but there's no reason we couldn't set up another working session. We, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, like, very similar to how we have the special meeting of the whole for the bunch. That was my thought, was that we would ask if we could have a special meeting of the whole for, for this.
Certainly doable and we, we'd be there to support you in any way. If I could just take a minute to thank Laurel and Rhonda, I learned so much tonight. Thank you so much. Your perspective was, uh, and historic background on this was, was very helpful to me. So thank you. It would help frame this issue for me.
Thank you. Ms. Gresham, Ms. Naylor, any, um, opposition to that? Any other thoughts? Is that, is that okay? So then my marching orders are to have a conversation with the vice chair and request that we have a special committee, um, or a special meeting of the whole committee and that this be the, the topic. And then Laurel and Rhonda, of course, we would work around your, your schedules to be able to, to ensure that yourself, um, and the, and the panel are able to be, to be present. And, and of course, it would happen virtually.
Right, right.
All right, so if there are no further agenda items, I just want to close and again, thank Laurel and Rhonda, but also really thank Lydia and Dwayne for helping to, to spearhead for finding Laurel and Rhonda. Thank you, Lydia, um, for doing that. And then Dwayne for contacting the other schools. It's definitely appreciated. And Matt, um, please send our regards to, to Paul Neil and Colleen. You all have been on the calls and those have been, um, very supportive. So any, any others? All right, and to you, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Gresham and Ms. Naylor. For, I know that it was a, a lengthy meetings, um, but I appreciate your, your attendance.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. This was, uh, very illuminating, very wonderful meeting.
That's going to be my word of the week.
I did it without even thinking. I just had it there.
Terry, if you would call, um, I'm sorry, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
I got you, Melinda.
Okay.
Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Moved by Mrs. Gresham, seconded by Mrs. Naylor. Rule call bowl is required.
Yeah, Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
And Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
More than sufficient, we'll pass, this matter passes. Thank you all and have a good night.